I'm going to call the Board of Select Board meeting to order for Monday, June 10th, 2024. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, I would ask you to join me with the Plut of Allegiance.
Plut of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is a public hearing, which Pete, if you would just read item A and then I'm going to turn it over to our attorney.
Public hearing, item A, public hearing pursuant to general law, chapter 140, section 157, to determine if the dogs owned by Wendella and James Dings located at 38 Riverside Drive, West Howard, Mass. 02671 are dangerous or nuisance. Votes may be taken.
Thank you. And then, just for official purposes, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, 157, as was mentioned, the Select Board is conducting a hearing as a result of written reports by the Howard's Animal Control regarding incidents involving the dogs known as Apollo and Brody owned by James and Wendella Elvira Dings of 38 Riverside Drive in the town of Howard's. The purpose of this hearing is to determine whether the dogs are dangerous or nuisance dogs, and if so, what, if any, action should be taken by the Select Board. So, turn to you.
Madam Chair, do you have any time?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, would you like me to read the rules of the meeting?
Okay, sure. That's fine. Thanks. If you'd like to. Or I can read them if you prefer, and you can just go into the testimony.
Whatever Madam Chair's preferences.
I'll just let the public know that all persons who wish to speak must first be recognized by the Chair. All those wishing to speak must introduce themselves by name and address or affiliation and be sworn in by Town Council or Town Administrator or myself. The hearing will be coordinated by the town's attorney here, a member designated by the Board. Town Council will assist with the Select Board by questioning witnesses, making objections, answering questions from the Select Board members, explaining the applicable law and outlining the Select Board's options. So we're first going to hear the testimony, consider the evidence from the town's animal control officer and the police department through Town Council, and then we will hear evidence and consider evidence from, sorry, hear testimony and consider evidence from the victims as well as the dog owners and their attorney, and anyone who wishes to testify or present evidence on their behalf. And third, the Select Board will deliberate over the evidence and vote to render a decision. So I will now turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to ask at the onset, anyone who would like to testify during the hearing, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I do.
And so I'd like to call the animal control officer as the town's first witness. Can you please state your name for the record?
Jennifer Harrington, the animal control officer for the town of Howard's.
And how long have you been the animal control officer for the town?
Since January of 2020.
And are you familiar with the dogs known as Brody and Apollo?
Yes, ma'am.
How are you familiar with them?
Going back to when I first started in 2020, I believe the first call was in March of 2020, where the dogs were running loose without any owner's insight. And there's been multiple calls since then for the dogs being loose and being a nuisance chasing people in the roadway.
Okay. And can you describe Brody to the Board?
Brody is a small, I'd say approximately 15-pound terrier-type dog. Brody is what I consider to be a nuisance. When he gets loose, he chases people, he barks at them, he jumps on them. He's an 11-year-old male.
And can you describe Apollo to the Board?
Apollo is an 11-year-old male Border Collie. When he gets loose, when he is loose, he also chases people, barks at them. This has been going on for several years. And then recently, back in February, Apollo bit someone.
Okay. And did you request this dangerous nuisance dog hearing?
Yes, I did.
And you mentioned a bite by Apollo. Was that the February 2024 incident?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Can you explain what happened at that time?
So I was working my regular animal control officer time, so I was on duty from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., driving a marked vehicle, G33. And we got, I got a call from dispatch stating that a woman had been bitten on Riverside, on the corner of Riverside Drive and Lower County when she was walking. The dog was described to me as a black-and-white sheepdog-type dog. When I arrived on scene, I met with Carla, who was the bite victim, Kahalane, I'm going to mess up the last name, I apologize. She met me on scene. The first thing I observed was that the back of her jacket, she had a down jacket on that was thigh-high, goes down to the middle of the thigh. And the first thing I observed was that the feathers, there was a big tear in the back of the jacket, and the feathers were coming out. I asked her if she needed medical assistance. She stated at that time that she did not, she wasn't sure if the dog had punctured through because she had pants on under the jacket. When she reached down to touch her thigh where the dog had bitten her and brought her hand back up, it had blood on it. So I advised that she be checked out by the EMTs from Howard's Fire Department. The dog at that time had been, was back on the property. Her description was Apollo, the black-and-white Border Collie that lived at 38 Riverside Drive.
Okay. Did she mention that Brody was present during this event as well?
But she did not see Brody present that day.
Okay.
I don't believe.
But you've had had incidents in the past where both Brody and Apollo chased people together, is that correct?
Correct. Usually, usually they're out together. And we've had incidents with one, whether it be Apollo or Brody.
Okay. There were a couple of instances between March and April in 2023. Can you explain to the Board what happened in March and April of 2023 with both Apollo and Brody?
Yes. So in March, March 10th of 2023, we actually had several people out walking that had called dispatch to advise that there were two dogs running loose on Riverside Drive chasing people, barking at them, the smaller one jumping on people. And April 6th of 2023, we received a call that the Border Collie and terrier-type dog chased a man. The reporting party was the, it was the, the reporting party was the wife of the victim. While he was walking, his dog on Riverside Drive, the Border Collie had chased her, had chased him that day, and then the week prior, jumped on her while she was riding her bicycle and knocked her over. At that time, citations were issued for the dogs being loose, citation for each dog, for failure to restrain, which is our Chapter 2612 bylaws for animal control, and a written warning for failure to license.
Okay. Now, did you give that, that written citation in 2023 because you had given verbal warnings in the past?
Correct.
Okay. And was there a verbal warning given in March of 2021?
Yes.
Can you explain why there was a verbal warning given in March of 2021?
Yes, a woman had called in reporting that she was walking on Riverside Drive. She stated that the Border Collie and silky terrier-type dog from 38 Riverside ran off the property and chased her down the road, barking at her. Reporting party stated that this was not the first time, and the dogs were scary, and she was afraid of them.
Okay. And to be clear, the warning that you gave was to Mr. and Mrs. Dings?
The verbal warning, I spoke with Wendella Dings that day.
And prior to 2021, had you been, been involved in incidents with the dogs?
We had a report. I did not have any prior incidents with the dogs. One of our other officers had an incident where the dogs were left outside in the fenced area, and the dogs were barking nonstop throughout the day.
Okay.
And then the prior incidents prior to 2020 were dealt with by the previous animal control officer, Jack Burns.
Okay. And there was a record of those incidents when you reviewed the file?
Yes, correct.
And can you explain just generally to the Board what those records show?
On July 28th, sorry, July 2nd, 2019, a call was received into our dispatch for a barking complaint. When they arrived on scene, the Border Collie was on the deck barking for a long period of time. No one was, no one was home upon arrival. July 28th, 2019, a call was received that the two dogs ran off property and accosted a couple walking down the road. When it was addressed with Mr. Dings, he admitted that he did let both dogs out unattended, knowing that the gate was not closed.
In your conversation with Mr. and/or Mrs. Dings, had they expressed that they were going to take steps to try and prevent their dogs from continuing to get loose?
Yes. When I've spoken with them, we've talked about making sure that the gates are closed and making sure that they're secure so the dogs don't run loose. And that's been a conversation we've had on multiple occasions.
And so, in your, in your opinion, the Dings haven't done anything to restrain the animals or to change their behavior in a manner that would restrain the animals? Is that fair to say?
Correct.
Okay. And so you gave the Dings verbal warning in 2021, a written warning in 2023, and when the incident happened in, in February of 2024, did you also give them a written warning?
Correct. It was a written warning and citation.
Okay. In your opinion, as the animal control officer for a number of years now as, in the town, and in speaking with the Dings, do you believe that after this February incident, the dogs are going to likely get loose again?
Yes, unfortunately. They have not been loose since February that we've gotten any calls on. But due to the history and lack of responsibility of containing them, I do believe that they will get loose again.
And so what is your, what is your professional opinion with respect to Brody?
My professional opinion is that Brody should be deemed a nuisance dog.
And Apollo?
My professional opinion with Apollo is that he should be deemed a dangerous dog due to the escalation in behavior.
And if the Board does find Brody a nuisance and/or Apollo a dangerous dog, do you have any recommendations as to the order that the Board should mandate?
So my recommendations would be that the, be, and these are recommendations that are put forth through the Mass. General Laws for dangerous dogs, that both Apollo and Brody shall be securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen, or a dog run upon the premises of the owner or keeper within the fenced-in yard. Provided further, that such pen or dog run shall have a secure roof, and if such enclosure has no floor secured to the sides thereof, the sides or fencing shall be embedded into the ground for not less than two feet. And provided further, that within the confines of such pen or dog run, a doghouse or proper shelter for elements shall be provided to protect the dog. That once in place must be inspected and approved by the animal control officer, myself. Also that when both dogs are removed from premises of the owner or the premises of person keeping the dogs, the dog shall be securely, properly, and properly restrained with a leash no longer than six feet in length, that shall be inspected and approved by animal control officer, and that only an adult over the age of 18 years of age shall walk both That Mr. and Mrs. Dings must keep both dogs rabies vaccinations current. The dogs must be licensed annually in the town where they are kept. Furthermore, that the Dings be held responsible for the damage and medical bills incurred by the victim.
Thank you. And one last question. Did you speak with, and I apologize if I pronounce her name wrong, Mrs., with Mrs. Calhoun after the incident?
Yes, I've spoken with her on several occasions. I spoke with her just after the incident to see how she was doing. And then I have spoken with her to advise her of the hearing request.
Okay. And did she indicate that she was afraid of the dogs?
Yes, she was afraid to walk down in that area, which is her normal walking routine.
And that's consistent with what you've heard from, from neighbors and abudders, that they are scared of the dogs?
Yes, I've had several phone calls of folks in the neighborhood that are afraid to walk in the neighborhood due to the dogs chasing after them and barking, and some that know that what has occurred, so.
Thank you. Madam Chair, do you or the Board members have any questions that you'd like to ask?
I think that, well, I'll go to Board members, but we also are going to hear from, right? So why don't we just go to them first, and then we'll go to Board members?
Thank you.
Thank you. And can I just say one more thing in the recommendations?
Of course.
So I do respectfully request that if the incidents continue with the Border Collie named Apollo and the terrier-type dog named Brody, that the Board set forth sanctions that the dogs be surrendered to a shelter or rescue within 10 days of any future incident. Excuse me. Do you want to ask a question now? Go ahead, sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just trying to get my handle on the license issue. How long was it that both dogs, each dog, had not been licensed? Would you know that?
So prior to the incident, when I, the first incident back in 2020, it showed that the dogs had not been, I only went back a few years, but the dogs had not been licensed for several years.
Thank you.
And the dogs, they got their warning last year to license, they licensed after their warning, but then again, this year, they were not licensed. Dogs are due to be licensed by January 30th of each year. The incident in February, the dogs were still not licensed. They did license them after the incident.
Thank you. Anybody else before Dunn leaves in terms of?
I have nothing at this time.
Jeff?
Bill.
Pete, you're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that Mr. and Mrs. Davis may be here to testify.
Mrs. Calhoun.
Mrs. Calhoun as well. Mrs. Calhoun?
Oh.
Thank you for being here. Can you just state your full name?
Carla Calhoun.
Okay. And Ms. Calhoun, can you explain to the Board why you're here today?
I was bitten by a dog on February 20th.
Okay. Can you explain to the Board a little bit about exactly what you were doing when that happened?
Yes, I was walking down Riverside Drive. I normally would have been out on Lower County and come back, and I follow the traffic patterns, so I was actually on the other side of the road closer to the dog's home. I was listening to a podcast, I could hear power tools, and then all of a sudden, I felt a bite. And I turned, and I saw the two dogs, both dogs were there. And I assumed the bigger dog, the Border Collie, had bit me. I walked up to the top of the street. I had feathers flying everywhere out of my down coat, and I was quite shaken up. I called to the Howard's Police Department. An officer, Jennifer, came out. And at that point, when I started to talk to her, I wasn't sure if I had been bitten or just a thought of claw, that maybe the dog just jumped up and got me. So I fell to my leg, and I had blood on my hand. So she offered if I needed an ambulance, or if I wanted, I live in Dennisport, if I wanted to go and have the Dennis Fire and EMTs come out. And I said, yes, that's what I would rather do. I didn't need, didn't think I needed an ambulance. So she offered to drive me home. We went home. My husband was there. She said, would you mind changing into a pair of shorts? And I did. And when I came out, she said, you've been bitten. And it was a deep wound. Dennis came out, they cleansed and dressed the wound. It's been really sore, it's still, I mean, I still have markings from it. I haven't gone back to that street. It was a favorite area to walk on, but I'm too scared, I've been scared to see other dogs when I walk. I had a man in my neighborhood that I'd seen most of the winter walking an off-leash dog, and then, this was about a month after it happened, and I just froze when the last I saw him. And he's like, oh, he's fine, he's fine. And I'm like, I was just bitten by a dog. And he's like, oh, I guess I should have him on the leash. I'm like, that would probably be a good idea. So.
So it's fair to say that this incident has affected your life?
Yes, it has.
And it has changed your routine?
Yep. Yeah. That day, when I sat with dog officer, I had asked for the names. I was concerned about, you know, rabies, if they had had their shots. And at that point, she indicated to me that she had been out to the home several times, but I appeared to be the first bite. But the dogs were vaccinated, and I knew myself that I was up to date with my shots and things like that. But I was told this is what I had to do to get any type of information on the ownership of the dog.
Okay. And you've said you've not been back to that same street, and is it safe to assume that that's because you're scared that the dogs will be back?
Yes.
Okay. And are you comfortable walking on any other street alone now?
Yes, I continue to walk. I am a daily walker. But if I hear dogs barking, if I definitely, if I see a dog that's not leashed, like, I freeze.
So it was a traumatic, a traumatic event for you, suffice to say?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything that you would like to tell the Board, anything further?
I mean, I'm still, you know, as I said, I just saw my doctor again last April. I mean, she said you've got quite a bruise there. I mean, it was a deep bite. Yeah, it's just, it's been a scary situation.
Well, thank you for, for coming here tonight and explaining to the Board. I understand that this, in and of itself, could be a little bit traumatizing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present tonight that would like to testify? Mr. and Mrs. Ding, is there anything that you would like to say to the Board?
The only thing that we would like to say.
You have to go to the microphone, and you have to identify yourself.
And also, if you, if you didn't swear in before, if you could just raise your right hands, do you swear to tell the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
I would just like to express my deepest.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, you have to face, yeah, to the microphone and just state your name.
My name is Wendy Dings.
Thank you.
I live at 38 Riverside Drive. I'm the owner of the dog with my husband, James. And we've just been sick over the dog bite, and we really want to apologize to Mrs. Calhoun deeply. I know that there is some legal action being taken, and we're cooperating the best that we can. We will put up a pen or whatever is needed and keep the dogs enclosed. We, you know, like I said, this has been life-changing for us, too. I was bitten by a dog on the face in 2018, and so to me, this is like the worst thing that could happen to anybody, so she has my deepest apologies.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, unless anyone else would like to testify, the Board can close the public hearing portion and engage in deliberations. Of course, if the Board members have questions for any of the witnesses, this is the time to explore those questions that they may have.
Before I close the public hearing, do you, does any Board member have any questions for? Okay. All right, then we'll get a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay. And then, obviously, it's up to the Board to make a decision. We've heard from Jen Harrington, our animal control officer, we've heard from our witness and victim in this scenario, and so I will go to Board, to anybody in particular who has a motion or something further to say or ask. Michael?
I move that the Board find that the dogs known as Apollo and Brody be found to be dangerous dogs, as said, dog, said dogs, have attacked aggressively with other dogs and humans, including attacking and causing bodily injury to both humans and other dogs with its aggressive actions.
Anyone second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Jeff?
So for discussion, if I understood, our animal control officer, Jen, and thank you for being here. One, you've recommended to be a nuisance dog. The other, you recommended, I believe, Apollo to be a dangerous dog.
Correct. Brody, the Border, sorry, Apollo, the Border Collie, to be deemed a dangerous dog because he has a bite history now. Brody, the terrier-type dog, has never bitten, so we were trying to deem him as a nuisance dog.
Thank you. So if I could get clarification on Michael's motion?
So we could, if you want to say, and just, just for the record, back to, it's Apollo that would be the dangerous dog, and Brody be the nuisance dog?
Yeah, and my thinking is that they acted together. And my thinking is they terrorized together. So I do respect our animal control officer's, what she recommends. This didn't happen solo. Every incident happened with both dogs, except for one that I read. And reading through the police reports and looking at the amount of time that it's taken, the Dings as just mentioned, and the apology goes someplace with me, but they mentioned that they would put up a pen. The fact that there is no pen now, and the history of this has gone on so long, I think that they're both dangerous dogs, and they're antagonizing the public, and that they should both be dangerous dogs.
No, go ahead, please.
No, no, I just, I want to follow up to the motion that's out there right now to just say that part of that motion, I, I would like to see is to include Jen's recommendations for the pen.
And the only reason I did not is the way it was presented to us, that we were going to determine first what they were, and then we would go on to a, a motion after that.
Right. So go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you for the clarification, and I wasn't disagreeing with you, just wanted to get a little more of the information that's, that you're thinking. I agree. I think it, with, with the history, with them not being licensed, it, it shows a bit of noncompliance over a number of years. So my feeling is I would support the motion where both dogs are to be found both a nuisance and dangerous.
Okay. Pete?
The reason for my second to Michael's motion is because the victim stated that she believes it was Apollo, but not 100% certain because both dogs were present. So in all likelihood, it was Apollo. However, I would agree with Michael that both dogs should be considered dangerous at this time.
Thank you, Pete. So we've got the motion and the second, and it's for both dogs to be dangerous. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we can put the specifics in place. Counsel, correct? Now we can note the requirements, that we also would concur with Jen Harrington's memo to us with all of those parameters in place, which would be the covered pen, the homeowner's insurance, and if there's a future incident, that the dogs be relinquished to rescue.
Yes, now that the Board has found both dogs to be deemed dangerous dogs, you can vote to put in place an order for the property owners to comply with.
Thank you.
I, I apologize to Jen for asking her to read it, but nowhere in any of our paperwork was that amount of stuff. So I would start a motion with, as a result of finding them dangerous, I move that the Board makes the following order, and that I would ask, just so that it's on the record, that Jen reread her recommendation to us.
Do you want me to read the whole recommendation letter?
I think you only need to go from, you know, that the terrier dog, because I have all your info in terms of confined indoors and if outdoors, and then just go to that specific about your requirements for the pen to be covered, and also, obviously, the fencing, if not a concrete floor, et cetera.
Okay. So you want me to start with that paragraph?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may, as long as that encompasses all of what you want, then I'm okay with it.
Yeah, all of, I mean, from that point down, it entails all of her requirements.
So my recommendation is that the terrier-type dog named Brody and the Border Collie-type dog named Apollo shall be securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run upon the premises of the owner or keeper within the fenced-in yard. Provided further, that such pen or dog run shall have a secure roof, and if such enclosure has no floor, secure to the sides thereof, that the sides of, that the sides or fencing shall be embedded into the ground for not less than two feet. And provided further, that within the confines of such pen or dog run, a doghouse or proper shelter from the shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog. That once in place, must be inspected and approved by the Animal Control Officer. That when both dogs are removed from premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dogs, the dog shall be securely and properly restrained with a leash no longer than six feet in length, that shall be inspected and approved by the Animal Control Officer, and that the only, that only an adult over the age of 18 years of age shall walk the dogs. We ask the board to give reasonable timeframe to complete these requests and to be inspected. Mr. and Mrs. Dings must keep both dogs' rabies vaccinations current. The dogs must be licensed annually in the town where they are kept. Furthermore, the Dings, that the Dings be held responsible for any damage and medical bills for the victim. It is in my professional opinion that the Dings lack responsibility in dog ownership, going back to their history of dog ownership with previous animals, with the prevention, with the previous Animal Control Officer, Jack Burns. The lack of correction in this matter has resulted in the escalation in behavior, even after many verbal warnings and citations being issued. I respectfully request that if the incidents continue with the Border Collie-type dog Apollo and the terrier-type dog Brody, that the board set forth sanctions, that the dogs be surrendered to a shelter or rescue within 10 days of any future incident.
That is my motion.
And just one more add that I think is worthwhile, that the owner or keeper provide documented proof of no less than 100,000 dollars in insurance for claims resulting from an intentional or unintentional acts of the dog or of reasonable efforts to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued. Do you agree?
I agree.
That is my motion in its entirety.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mike, Don? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This goes out to the Dings. I'm deeply concerned that your neighbors are actually, you know, terrified to walk around with a dog, with any dog at this point, because they're scared that something might happen to them. But I'm deeply concerned that the town of Harwich, for as long as I can remember, has generally construed being under the control of their owner as being sufficient, so that every dog doesn't wind up being leashed everywhere throughout town. You're taking that away from the whole town eventually. I hope you can ponder that, because it's an act of responsibility that transcends just your neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Don. Michael?
Don covered it.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero. Thank you. So now, we can move on. Is nothing more for you, Counsel, is there?
Not unless the board has any questions, Madam Chair.
Good, thank you. Now we are going to return to executive session, and we will not, we will return back to public session after we're completed with executive session. I don't anticipate it being longer than even 15 minutes, but that's an ETA, and then we will return to open session. Thank you. Question on that item, and we now have a new police chief to announce when Chief Gilmet retires, so I would like to congratulate Kevin Consonine on becoming our new Chief of Police in July.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you very much for this honor. I truly appreciate it. Shows a lot of trust in you for me. Thank you to the Town Administrator and Assistant to Town Administrator for this process, and I'm just looking forward to leading the great men and women of the Harwich Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin. We're lucky to have you, so congratulations to you and to the town of Harwich. Thanks.
Madam Chair, if I could, on your agenda, it does say affirm. I know you've announced it, but it may help for the record just to have that affirmation of the five-zero vote
Yes, five.
That was taken earlier.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I move that we affirm the appointment of Kevin Consonine as Police Chief effective July 1st.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will go on to public comments and announcements.
Jamie Goodwin, Harwich Channel Director. I haven't been here in a couple weeks. I'm taking a little self-imposed meeting break, but it's good to be back. Tomorrow morning, the table that you're currently sitting at will be no more. It has exceeded its useful life. The chairs you are sitting in will be replaced with new chairs. The audience tables, our chairs will be replaced, presentation table, podium table. This is a long time in the coming. I want to announce this because some of the viewers at home, going forward, the room orientation will change. So the camera shots will be a little different until we're able to reposition the cameras and add more cameras to make them better. So I would ask for everyone's patience that view it at home. It will look a little different. I want everyone to also know that this was not a decision that was made lightly. I brought in a lot of other department heads, the Facility Maintenance Director, Carolyn Carey, other boards and committees that meet in this room. Caleb and I mocked it out. We measured, we checked everything. We wanted to make sure that not just the Select Board, but every board that meets in this room is comfortable and can have a successful meeting. So I will be taking all compliments and no criticisms on the new furniture. So I appreciate everyone's patience going forward with the new setup. It will look different from that side, from this side. We're working on getting better symmetry. We're working on it being more comfortable for you, for the people here. We will have a technology component that Megan Eldridge is assisting me with. I have one more demo with a vendor next week, so I will be moving forward with that once I figure out what we're going to do on the technology side. So I just also want to thank the voters, because this money is coming from a warrant article from 2021, I believe. So I just wanted to thank everybody and compliments, no criticisms. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, and thank you for all your hard work on that, because we know it's not easy, and we're looking forward to it. And change is good, so. That's right. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment and announcements? Judy?
I'm Judith Ford, the President and Artistic Director of the South Harwich Meeting House. I am ecstatic to be presenting to you an upcoming event that we're having like nothing we've ever done before or may never do again. It is an incredible, incredible experience. It's called Oh Captain, My Captain, and it's an original musical drama at the Meeting House, and it's all about several, six ships, actually. Five captains, six ships, other way around. Six ships, five captains. Incredible stories, true stories, many of which happened at a Meeting House, almost all of which happened at the Meeting House. Original hymns, original services, and all of the connection with the Deep Hole Wharf down off of Red River Beach. Our stories are poignant, they're sad, they're funny, they will make people cry, and it's being directed by Jim Byrne, who is just an incredible person. We have a huge cast of singers, well, vocalists, actors, musicians, and an incredible narrator, actor. And we're going to be turning the entire Meeting House, which is right now in transition, into a ship inside. So you'll actually board a ship. It will be a total ship interior. We've surrounded all the entire walls with three incredible projections, so we have actually almost like an omni effect of three-dimensional. We have 16-foot waves, storms, stars, just incredible footage of the historic wharf even. And I think for anyone in Harwich that misses this, it will be really very regretful. It is just an incredible performance. We're only doing it four times. We have a feeling that it might be so popular that it might continue on on an annual basis, but we're not sure yet. But it is really something not to miss. It's going to be June 22nd and 23rd. The Saturdays are going to be seven at night, and the Sundays at four in the afternoon. And the following weekend, the last weekend of June, the same thing, seven o'clock Saturday night on the 29th, and four o'clock on the 30th. Our tickets are $30. Students are 20, and it is filling up really fast, and I would really hope that the Town Administration and everybody who is proud of what we've done with that building will be there. It shows what the importance is in saving historic building, which embodies these stories that then can be told and go on for all the generations ahead. But thank you so much for letting me announce this. I'm going to leave this with you, Judith.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. Sounds fascinating.
Yes.
That's beautiful. Thank you so much, Judy. Good luck with everything.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening. I was going to say good afternoon. It feels like afternoon still. Couple of quick things from the Chamber. I'm Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Chamber. First, congratulations, Kevin. We actually, as part of one of our Wednesday nights, will be having a celebration for Meet the New Police Chief. We'll announce the date. Kevin and I are just working those out right now. We'll have a touch of truck and more, so that'll be, you can watch for that later on. First note, we had our barbecue competition this weekend. Everyone that came had a good time. Thank you, Bill, for being there. First, It Takes a Village to Put Something Like This On. Everyone from Jared at DPW, Carolyn and the entire team over at the Community Center, it was fabulous. Thank you so much. We had tents from the Sheriff's Department, and it was really a wonderful thing. It's going to grow next year. We've got already the planning going. But our winners, I did send this already to the paper, but chili was Navliss Bar and Grill in Orleans. The wings, first place was 400 East. Second place was The Lanyard. Our ribs went to Red River Barbecue, and the brisket, first place was Red River Barbecue, and the second place was Navliss Bar and Grill. I have these in order. This Saturday is the fire, first Fire and Rescue Appreciation Day up at Hinckley's. This has been something that we started last year with the police. Hinckley's is one of our longstanding businesses in East Harwich, and really wants to give back more to the community, so we've started these appreciations. So this Saturday, June 15th, 11 to 3, at Hinckley's Home Center, there's barbecue, a live band, and a great appreciation for the Fire and Rescue and the Animal Rescue League of Boston will also be there. And finally, the date has come. Drumroll, please. Beach stickers, Treasure Chest stickers, Transfer Station, June 12th for all in-person locations, which is the Chamber, seven days a week from now until Labor Day, including all holidays. The Community Center, June 12th through July 20th, seven days, but they are closed June 19th and July 4th. Beach stickers can, or all stickers and access can be done online as well through the Town website. I'm just making sure I have everything. But the big date for everyone that is wondering is June 12th. That's this Wednesday. You can get everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone. Ashley Summington, Director of Youth and Family Services. I have a summer program that's getting ready to kick off on Mondays from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. It's going to run June 24th through August 26th, except for August 12th, because I will be away from work for some self-care time. It's called Connect and Grow, and it is a collaborative effort with my department, as well as the Health Department and Conservation. It's designed to really build family connections and also environmental wellness. We're going to be taking advantage of the vegetable garden that is being worked on on the lawn of the 204. So outside on the lawn, we'll have a story activity each week, as well as something either fun or creative or kind of nature wellness-oriented for families to do. Kara at the 204 has been kind enough to give us space inside, so it's not going to rain on Mondays, but in case it does, we'll be able to move inside and continue on. Open to anybody, no registration required, and no cost as well. We are gearing this for children, preschool through elementary school, kind of keeping with our goal of prevention efforts. And the only thing we need families to bring is a blanket to sit on.
Wow, that sounds amazing.
Thank you.
That's great.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck with that.
Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. My voice is back. Sit back. No, just kidding. I truly just wanted to announce that at the Community Center, the week of June 17th, the actual gym, not the weight room, the gym, will be offline for the installation of the new bleachers. So we will be, the building is open, everything is operational, except for the actual gym. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else for public comment announcement? Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to announce the next office hours will be, I'm flipping it up a little bit here, instead of afternoon, early evening, try to catch a different group of people if they would like to attend. So it's going to be Thursday, June 27th, from 7:30 a.m. to 8:45-ish a.m., and that will be at the Seal Pub in Harwich Center. So we're hoping maybe coffee and a different venue and a different time may open the doors for some other people to show up and tell us how they feel. And if Select Board Member McCauswell would like to come as well, as he has all the way through, that would be wonderful.
Great.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Again, it's Thursday, 27th of June. Thank you.
Michael?
Town Administrator has his hand up.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you both. This announcement actually comes from the Mass Department of Transportation and the Monomoy Regional School District, specifically the Harwich Elementary School. There is a Harwich Elementary Safe Routes to School Design Public Hearing. A Design Public Hearing will be held in support of the Harwich Elementary School improvements. Safe Routes to School Project, the project will construct a sidewalk or shared youth path along segments of South Street, Main Street, and Sisson Road, ranging from five to eight feet in width, depending upon location. The construction of the path is expected to improve safety, mobility, and accessibility to and from the school for students who walk or bike. Active transportation will become safer and more inviting. Again, that was written by Mass Department of Transportation. The hearing itself is taking place this Wednesday, June 12th, at 6:00 p.m. It's going to be in the Multi-Purpose Room at the Harwich Community Center, and there is more information at mass.gov if you're interested in that. So again, that hearing is Wednesday evening, 6:00 p.m. at the Community Center Multi-Purpose Room.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment announcements? Hearing, nobody. Can we go to the consent agenda?
Consent agenda item A, accept the resignation of Deborah Miller from the Brooks Academy Commission, excuse me, effective immediately.
So moved?
Yeah. Okay. All in favor?
We didn't get a second.
Oh, I thought you, I thought, oh.
Motion.
Motion.
Seconded.
All right, you're doing the second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So four and one abstention.
Thank you.
And then, old business. Just bring out the goals and objectives and the discussion, and I did get your follow-ups from Jeff and Michael in terms of, I'm in agreement, I think a lot of things can be, you know, incorporated on the same lines. I did just put everybody's goals and objectives that they shared on the spreadsheet, so that everybody's words were out there. So does anyone want to open discussion on, or actually, why don't I just go through just to note, sorry, I have so much paper in front of me right now, that I'll just go through on the items so that Don and Pete have the follow-up. So this one is from Jeff, and Jeff's 10 goals are Monomoy Regional School Negotiation, Review of REC and 204, Improve Working Relationship with FinCom, as well as Timeline for ATM, Owners Unknown, Delinquent Taxes, Tax Leans, Housing and Zoning Changes, Waste Water Updates, with additional meetings with the Water Commissioners, which we've discussed in the past, Improved Information Flow, Improved Department Assessments and Direction to Department Heads by TA, Consistent Updates on Projects and Deliverables, and Set Policy for Date Certain Evaluations for TA and Police Chief, Fire Chief, and Finance Director. Michael's, and actually, let me get my spreadsheet out, just so I can go over Michael's, because Michael numbered them as I numbered them, so let's go. As Michael indicated, and I do agree, as I said earlier, is that certain things can be incorporated. So choices for Michael are, you know, one, which is discussion with Chad on future of the funding on Monomoy, and two, which is REC Department Review and Sisson on Future of Funding on Monomoy, and two, which is REC Department Review and Sisson Road Assessment, three, Owners Unknown and Tax Delinquent, eight, which is Personnel, Improve Department Assessment by TA, Updates on, and need, areas that need improvement. And then four, oh, that was eight, sorry, 10, which is Housing, Address Projects, which we know can move forward, 14, which is Improve Systems to Become More Uniform, so when transition occurs, we're not revisiting and, you know, remaking the wheel, 16, Provide Semi-Annual Updates on Town's Overall Department Current and Future Recommendations from the TA Moving Forward, and 20, which would be the TA Mates with Select Board Members Individually on Scheduled Basis to Discuss Upcoming Issues Similar to Chatham. Is that right? Yeah. So those were your priorities. So I think that we can, after discussion tonight, hone in on the top 10 and just be done so that we can finalize our goals and objectives. So I guess with the feedback from Jeff and Michael, I would go to Dawn and Pete for further feedback.
Madam Chair, those updates to the June 3rd email that you sent?
So those are, those are feedback that Michael and John gave after our meeting where...
I, I don't really have anything to say until I can actually see a copy of that.
Oh, I didn't incorporate them on this. The spreadsheet I sent included everybody's because I wanted everybody's thoughts that they shared to be on the spreadsheet. So like we talked about last week, you had said you didn't have time to look at the spreadsheet. So it's really just picking the items from 1 to 26 that's on here and saying, what are your top 10? These are just their priorities.
Yeah, just to clarify, nothing new. I just gave my top 10.
Yeah.
And there's no new information that I submitted.
No. This is just prioritizing, and that, we talked about that last week when we said we would table the discussion on goals and objectives, 'cause we had had a fairly lengthy meeting. So there's nothing different.
I prefer to Pete first.
Okay, so...
And I hate to waste your time, but could I just ask you to read the numbers of each of them again, not the, not the subject line, but, 'cause I wasn't, I wasn't quite prepared. I was trying to dig out my document. I couldn't find it.
I will, I'll read Michael's because Jeff didn't...
Okay.
Do you want me to get the...
Yeah, we're here, just take, just number yours.
I'm sorry to cause a delay. I just wasn't going along.
You can take that. So I'll give you Michael's. One, two, three, eight, 10, 14, 16, and 20.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll be with you in a minute.
Take your time.
So, and I didn't want to revise the document that I had previously distributed because, like I said, it incorporated everybody's items that they shared with me, and we had not discussed this last week, so I thought it better to leave the document alone. And then, in the meantime, Michael and Jeff gave me feedback, so...
And ju, and just as Jeff's going through that exercise, what I did, and I apologize, I guess I thought that the discussion was happening here tonight, but I went through and I saw a couple that I thought could potentially be combined. You know, I look at...
Yeah, no, I think you're right, which is great.
Right. So I look at 6, 17, and 19, and in some fashion, I think they all kind of mirror each other and can be, become one in some fashion. And, and obviously, in Michael's suggestion, 16, no, I'm sorry, that doesn't coincide, but th, those three can, can, can come together. I think 12 and 24, or, God, I wish I could read my own handwriting. 26 could be combined with 11 potentially.
Okay.
And I think 24 with 12.
24 and 12, okay.
I don't know why I think it should be 21, huh? So, anyway, to, to, to go through some of my priorities, clearly, my, you know, and I know we're not doing it in, in, sorry, in order, but my number one is actually 15. No surprise, it's, it's my own submission. But I think the financial reports and updates to this board are extremely important for a number of reasons. You know, I think it helps us set, set the priorities as we move forward, going into next fiscal year. And I think I've heard a number of times in the short few months that I've been sitting here that receipts or revenues may be a concern in future years. So it's something I'd like the, the board to stay informed on and proactive rather than reactive. I think we've already seen it at the state level, and it only, it can only transfer to the local level as well. Obviously, I would agree with the, and I deliberately didn't put it on my initial list because I knew other members would have it on theirs, but the discussion with Chatham on the future funding. My only difference on that one is I'm, and I know I talked about this previously, as far as separating the Select Board Goals and the TA Goals, I really think that belongs to the Select Board because as much as Joe can help us begin that conversation, I think it's really important that we get the School Board involved, the other elected body in town, and, and we work with them and their committee, since it's a by-town committee, and it's incumbent upon us to reach out to the Board, the Select Board, and Chatham. So I'd like to see that one fall more on us, or on us at this time and not on Joe, and potentially, that's one of those things that down the road may end up on, on his lap that he would probably embrace. You ready, Dawn?
Yeah, because actually, one of those has to do with combining something of yours and mine.
Okay. Do you wanna go ahead?
Yeah. I was gonna ask for you to recognize me as Chair. Yeah. I'm thinking that 17 and 23 are somewhat intertwined. I mean, we keep, we keep starting late, and at that point, we always end late. I mean, and once you start repeating, 'cause getting the updates is fine, but if we start the process, like, in late October, then the updates become more frantic.
So, I'm sorry, did you say combine 23 and which one? I missed it.
17.
17.
So start the process earlier, as late as, late August, or as early as late August, and then get the updates that Pete's suggesting. That's the first one. These are not so much combinations, but I really, 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 I mean, this is an information thing, and I think sometimes, some of us know more than others on things that are going on. I really would like to get to a point, I know Chatham does it, but number 20, I am absolutely in love with. I don't care whether they're weekly, but I think the TA needs to meet with each member to try to go over where we're at and where he thinks we're going without deliberating anything, because, again, I think we all need to know the same stuff at the same points, and it would engender better relations ultimately. So 20 is really important to me. And 21, I'm somewhat surprised I was the only one to say anything about that, because policy recommendations for emerging issues is something I think, I mean, that's way at the top of a list of tasks for a town administrator. Provide, you know, policy options for emerging, for emerging issues.
Did you have any other more that you wanted to do, or...
I mean, some of them are secondary, and as I said to you, admittedly, some of what I submitted was more for appraisal purposes than it was for a goal and objective. But I mean, I, I have long held the belief that we need to have, you know, communications that are predictable, like, from the town administrator to members of this board when they, when somebody makes an inquiry, and certainly when the community makes, and I don't mean just somebody asking a random issue, I mean, when, when there's an important issue, there should be some parameters about what we expect in terms of return response.
Okay.
May I ask a follow-up to Dawn's? So Dawn, am I hearing you right when you say that Chatham has their Select Board have scheduled meetings with the TA?
The town manager, but yeah.
The town manager. 'Cause I go in and I talk to Joe weekly. I, I just wanna make sure I understand. You're asking for something to be scheduled?
Yeah, I think, I think several members of this board understand that at times, walking in isn't a successful endeavor. Sometimes you just walk in and get scheduled.
Yeah, I mean, I, I email...
I'd rather have this more proactive.
Understood.
So, and just, I, just on that same topic, so I would say, for me, I wouldn't be looking for that meeting, but we can certainly make it a priority, but obviously, I would say that each member should contact the town administrator and schedule a time that works for both you and him, and then anybody else who wants to do it. But I think that makes...
That's what I do.
Yeah, that's what I think makes sense. And so I think we can certainly make it, keep it on, on our goals and objectives, but I think that kind of depends more on each Select Board member saying, this day works for me, Joe does that day work for you in time. So...
I, I don't care whether it's a specific each-week meeting, but I really want it to be on the radar screen, because putting it on us doesn't make any sense if, if we don't wind up having that meeting.
No, that's, but I, that's what I'm saying is that...
I mean, what mechanism would you use then to recognize?
I would email them and, or talk to them and set a date and time that works for you weekly so that you always have that meeting.
Yeah, I would say every time I reach out to the TA, or Megan, or Danielle, to schedule, it's, I hear back in four hours and there's a meeting.
And that's you.
And I typically, well, that, I guess that is me. I don't know if, I can't speak for other board members, but I found it pretty easy to meet. And with Megan as well. Megan's a breeze to meet with as well.
I was just gonna read for your sakes, because I did not have Jeff's numbered, so... Yeah, you gave it to me. Thank you. So for Jeff, priority would be the discussion with Monomoy, which is item number one. And then, Review of REC and 204 is two. Owners Unknown and Tax Leans and Delinquent Taxes is three. And Improve Working Relationship with FinCom, as well as a Timeline for Annual Town Meeting is four. Where's five?
I think it goes to six from there.
Oh.
Six at the bottom.
Oh, right there. Consistent Updates on Projects and Deliverables, six. Set Policy for Date Certain Evaluations, seven. Improve Department Assessments and Direction to Department Heads by TA, eight. And then it goes to 10, Housing Develop, Develop Tools, Zoning Changes, Waste Water Updates, and Increase Meetings with Water Commissioners, and then Improved Information Flow. So...
Can I say one thing about that?
Sure.
So, every one of these are important. Every single one of these are important. They're all germane, they're all, they're all necessary for this town to, to move forward in a positive direction. I found it really hard to pick 10.
Yeah, no...
But I understand Dawn's point about if you pick 15, it becomes almost impossible to execute at, on any level, on any one. I'm real interested to see how this board titrates this down to really our top 10, and then the top five of the top 10, that we're gonna begin moving and acting on immediately. I, I see some of these as low-hanging fruit. For example, even if it didn't make any of the other top 10s, a policy, as we've talked about, and Pete's mentioned it a couple times since he's been here, you know, with a policymaking board, I'd like to see a policy made to set a date, certain time, that the Select Board reviews, the TA, anyone under the Select Board. I think that's a very easy one, and then I would only have nine.
Yeah.
And then I could backfill with the 10th.
So I think, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And actually, in support of what Jeff's saying, there's two different types of these things. Some of these goals and objectives live on.
Oh, yeah.
For every year, you, every year, you're gonna want that discussion to occur in, in an orderly way. Some of it isn't, some, like the Monomoy situation. That's an urgent issue right now, and, and I will point out to you again that that's not something that your liaison is really capable of pulling a rabbit out of a hat with. It has to be an inter-board meeting. But some of these things are specific things that have to be remediated right now, and others will live on for other boards. It would suggest that it's always gonna be important to make sure that there's a target date for the evaluations and that kind of stuff. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the 10 because there's a mixture of specific ones and long-lasting, transcending ones, which eventually get embedded anyway. So if, if we could, you know, hold the line for those objectives, then they'll happen again next year.
So if it makes sense to board members, I can take what we talked about tonight, revise the spreadsheet, which I didn't wanna do till we had this discussion, and I will share the reduced spreadsheet, so, but I'll give you the original and the reduced, and then we can talk a little further about any other pairing down that needs to happen, depending on what I'm, I'm left with at the end. Michael?
Yeah, just to Jeff's point, on the policy, there's nothing to prohibit you from writing a policy or a draft of a policy and asking the Chair to put it on. And to me, someone mentioned low-hanging fruit. That would just be an easy one to check off the box and not something, in my mind, gradable, or something that we should even be putting on paper. Equally as important to all of us, and, and you can write that policy, and I look forward to the draft.
You knew that was coming.
That's why I turned this way, Madam Chair. I take it better on the right than the left.
That's the ear that doesn't hear well.
And Dawn, I wrote down your, your items too, as well as Pete's, but if you wanna send me anything further in email, just if you give it to me by...
Good Lord, I don't wanna add to it.
By Friday, so that I just can work on that over the weekend. So that's goals and objectives, unless anyone has any further discussion on that.
If I could just continue on for a minute.
Sure.
So, again, I'm, I'm not gonna belabor this point, but I really think separating the two out is, is an important distinction, especially for tracking purposes. But Jeff, could you just repeat? I'm sorry, I missed. What, which policy is it that you wanted to see initially?
So there is no policy or any standard practice, as far as I, as far as I know, where this Select Board has a date certain review of the people, the departments that we're supposed to review.
Direct reports.
Say again?
Direct reports.
The direct reports. So that would be TA, Financial, Finance Director of Police and Fire. And I know we have to evaluate them. I just think it should happen prior to town meeting, the month before prior to town meeting, like in April, so that every, imagine if you came on the board and then you had to do an evaluation in two months of sitting on the board. That's why I think it would make sense to do it in April, when everybody sitting has had a fair amount of time to...
And, and, excuse me for being ignorant, but is the Charter silent on that?
It's a contractual thing.
It's, it just states in the Charter that it's contractual, or it's silent in the Charter?
Silent. In the contracts, say that there's a...
It's just an annual review, but there's not a specified term.
Gotcha. And, and since it is a contractual obligation, is it specified in the contract? Or again, just states annual?
Just annual.
Time frame. Okay. All right. Because one of the, one of the things I think, you know, holistically, as a group, all of our policies need review, all right? I think we can all agree on that. And, and I'm certainly not raising my hand right away to start rewriting these things.
Michael will vote you, right?
That's all right. If elected, I will not serve, but... You know, I, I think we have some, some, some great folks in Town Hall that can begin this process for us, and, you know, I'm not gonna speak to Joe, but I know Joe and I had a conversation regarding policy, and I don't wanna throw you in the last minute, but do you wanna share some of your thoughts or opinions on, on the policy discussion, policy review discussion?
Well, sure, in that I think you've, we've heard you say, and others have said, that the executive body, known as the Select Board, you execute by way of policy. So that is absolutely within your purview. It's within the Charter, it's within statute. And I think any of us, when you first come into town and you read the, the book of policies on policies, you know, there's an abundance of them. I think a couple of meetings ago, you had mentioned free cash policy, and I suggested you may wanna look at Committee Handbook. It's not necessarily a policy, but it's been driving a lot of the discussions you've been having. So I think policy discussion at the board level and with staff is absolutely critical. I think it's the lifeblood of what we're all supposed to be doing, and it starts and ends with the Select Board, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Anything else, Pete?
Madam Chair, could I go back to an earlier comment?
Sure.
So Chapter 4 does say that the Board must establish a written set of procedures by which to evaluate the administrator, and every one of your direct reports has a section, three of them, I think, are generally the same language.
three of them I think are generally the same language, on evaluations. Most of them require the, the role of Town Administrator, I'm going to say it that way so it doesn't sound like third person, to do that, and then with regard to the Administrator, you have both contract language and charter language. But if you look at Chapter Four in the Charter, it does say that there is expected to be a written set of procedures.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Any other comments? Okay, so we'll bring this back with the revisions and, from Monday. And contracts?
So I had a man a contract vote, a contract with Ty &amp; Bond Inc. for engineering services for the Herring Road Fish Passage on Route 124, fully grant-funded in the amount of $246,150,000.
For whose signature?
What'd you say?
For whose signature, as part of the motion.
Okay, so, for the signature, I believe it was, let me look. I read the contract, it was quite long.
So there is a, a document that the Board can sign. It, it has, it has four lines, but five signatures could be presented there.
Okay.
Is that the question?
Yeah, the question is for whose signature.
It was just so the public knows who's signing it.
Okay, so we can all sign it?
I'll second that.
And it's a grant?
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero. Okay, I lost my agenda again. Thank you. And then Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. As I'm speaking, you're getting other documents to sign. These were documents related to past votes, including appointment letters, thank you letters, as well as the letter that was shared to you by my staff to go out to the Legislature on that article we talked about last week. And then beyond that, I do have an announcement on a contract. It comes in at the $75,000 mark whereby my authority to sign ends. So I did execute a contract on May 30th for Markings Inc. Markings Inc. is the low bidder through a Barnstable County bid, and they are going to be, it was an invitation for bids for various types of road construction, maintenance and repair. The funding for this contract, which is exactly $75,000 or not to exceed, is coming from the Department of Public Works, their operating budget specifically under the facilities maintenance line items. So again, that was a contract not to exceed $75,000 for Markings Incorporated, and the procurement was handled through the Barnstable County Procurement Division.
All right, thank you, Joe.
And that's my report.
Select Board members' reports, Pete?
Nothing this evening.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a follow-up. The Children's Center had its 31st birthday party at the Coastal Center on Sunday. Have to say, have to give a shout-out to Kara, she was really helpful. I mean, it, it held off raining until we wanted to start, and then it stopped right after we ended, so. Yeah, but she, she was really good at, adept at going with the flow, but a good time was had by all, and I appreciate it for the whole community to shout up.
I have nothing.
Michael?
Not a report, just re-raise my concern about the project in Dennis, and in hopes that the Town Administrator will reach out to his counterpart in Dennis and figure out how we can have a voice in that, or at least get regular updates from their staff. And I'm talking about Eagle Pond Nursing Home. We're kind of kept in the dark on this, and I've certainly reached out to different Board members in the town of Dennis, but I don't think that's doing our residents any favors. So I think it'd be helpful if we had a direct line to somebody over there that's running this permitting project, and, and we got updates. So that's an ask.
I think that Joe had a conversation, didn't you share? I thought it was an email.
So I did respond to a Board member question on that. So generally speaking, with regard to the Love Lane, I think the title they're using is the, how, excuse me, Freudian slip, Housing Assistance Corporation, the HAC Love Lane Family Transition Center. The Managers and Administrators of the Commonwealth had a meeting the week before last in Brewster. I did have an opportunity to talk to my counterpart from Dennis directly, made it clear, and I think she ended, she said she got that as well, that the town of Harwich, through the Select Board first, is looking for a seat at the table. She indicated that her Board is also seeking that venue. They're going through some, I believe, publicly-known legal proceedings to try to establish that, but she did say that as her town talks about it and her Board, she said she would convey what I conveyed to her, that you conveyed to me, that she conveys it to her Board as well. And I've made staff aware that if they get any outreach to let me know, so that we make sure that we are engaging in these conversations. I think the rest of it, I'd have to wait and hear back from my colleague specifically to that issue, but there is updates on traffic generally, as we've talked about. I did give an update, and we'll be looking to talk to you, Madam Chair. It may be that we can have representatives from both the county and our road, a road engineer firm, talking about traffic generally, about some of the other projects that are going on.
And if I recall correctly, because that email was today, right, that?
Correct.
Yeah, that you weren't sure that that could make it on our.
So I'm still waiting to hear. I did ask if they were able to attend on June 17th, so I will put that question back to them. I know you've got a full agenda potentially shaping up, but these are crickle issues, and I think if we can get them to appear, that would be good.
Yeah, no, that would be helpful.
And just to follow on, if we could get bi-weekly updates or weekly updates on the conversations with Dennis, just so that we know. If I didn't ask tonight, we wouldn't have gotten what you just told me, which is good information, and the public wants it. And then as far as the traffic, thank you for sending that. I'd ask that regardless of whether or not we get this on the agenda for next week, that that information gets shared with the public so they can read the reports. And if we don't drive this, it's going to be.
Did you say the traffic report?
Traffic report. It was in our memo today. If we don't drive this and we continue to wait, it's going to be October, and applications are going to be filed, and we'll probably have a response to RFP already, and the projects are going to start. And in my opinion, the argument is now, not later, or any recommendations on changes is now, not later. So more information, and our own police department has traffic counters. I, I don't, I don't see any harm in, in, in starting the process on our own and putting our own traffic counters out in strategic locations so that we can start to collect our own data. But whatever we have that was shared to us tonight needs to be shared with the public.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In support of what Michael's saying, I just want to repeat again, it's some 25, 26 years ago when that facility was built, Eagle Pond, we did have a seat at the table. Our planning board took that up as an issue, because again, you can't get to it unless you're going through Harwich. There is no way to get, even though on a map, it's in Dennis, there's no way of getting to it except via our roadways. And what's terrifying about this is the path that they appear to be taking, in the regulatory vein, seems to exempt it from any sort of review of any kind, which is frightening, because by declaring it off-limits, anything in the future is going to be off-limits too.
So we're looking for a seat, but Dennis can't get a seat really at this point, so. Joe?
Well, I, I'd like to try to be clear as we're talking about all of this, based on what you've just said, Madam Chair, and what the prior speaker had said, I, I have not thwarted any effort. If the Board was looking to have a substantive discussion on that project, you folks create your agenda. There's no information that I've been able to gather, other than what I've sent previously, whereby you folks could and should talk about it. So I would put it back to you folks to just simply ask, if you want to talk about it, you should put it on an agenda. I'll try to gather anyone that I can, but specifically, the town of Dennis, every one of my counterparts, has expressed frustration at their inability to have a seat at the table as well. So that's why I know, I know that the Town Administrator and the Select Board are working through their council and trying to initiate some sort of proceeding that lets it come before the Select Board. Until then, though, I don't disagree, but you folks are the executive body of the town, so why don't you put it on an agenda so you can have the discussion as well?
Yeah, we can do that. We can just add it, I don't know if we can get it on the 17th. If we can, we should just add it to the 17th, or put it on to the 24th and see if we can get more discussion on it and how we're, I mean, the point of that is, we're having a discussion, we're talking about it, you know, sharing traffic info, but the problem is that, you know, as you just said, Don, it, it does impact us. There was a previous seat at the table when it was a different, you know, project, but Dennis is trying to get that seat, and it's in, in their town, so I, I think, you know, we can have the discussion, we're still looking at how do we have an impact.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My concern, and it goes back to the last thing I said about the changing the ballfield here, if you will, in terms of the regulatory process. Trip generations are, as you would know, are very specific to the type of use that the facility is going to go through. Looking at this, I've had people tell me, well, there's not going to be any trips at all. It's, it's just going to be a center where the, where people are going to be sheltered. I'm like, okay, how are they getting food? How are they getting in and out if they do get the possibility of work? I don't know that anybody's talking about trip generations specific to this change, because people that I thought would have understood this better were like, well, it's the same as the nursing home, except that the people who were in the nursing home were a passive population that were receiving services, you know, food service trucks and the staff that would go year-round, I mean, around the clock with them. But I'm presuming that there's going to be some sort of security, I'm presuming there's going to be some sort of provision for food. I mean, it's, to have that, you have to have that discussion, because the, the actual use of the property isn't exactly the same, and I know that they're using an umbrella to define it out of that, any kind of regulatory structure, but we really need to stay on top of this, because we're going to be exempt from ever having a discussion if this gets approved as it is right now.
Yeah, well, I think they're going for DRI or whatever.
That's what it sounded like, even if they're not using that letter.
I think so, so.
Madam Chair, just lastly, is we share council with Dennis. They have KP Law as well, so it seemed to me that we call KP Law and ask that we be included in any of the conversations, that KP Law is working with the Dennis Select Board.
Along those lines, if the agenda item could be inclusive enough that we have the ability to, you know, make motions that evening, whether it's requesting a letter to the Dennis Select Board, or to, you know, Housing Assistance, or even the Commonwealth, whatever it is, that it's inclusive enough that we can take action as a group.
Do you know whether the, Madam Chair, do you know whether the commission itself is taking this up as a DRI, as an agenda item, or?
I don't, I actually started to.
Because that's the missing piece. It sounds like it is.
Joe looks like he might have some.
So my understanding, and most of this I've gleaned from just accessing the documents on town of Dennis's website, it's my understanding that the town of Dennis sought a determination of regional impact from the county, from the Cape Cod Commission, excuse me, and that that was not granted.
Okay.
So that the town of Dennis Select Board and staff are trying another route to compel a conversation that could happen at the Select Board level. But it's my understanding that between the applicant's attorney invoking the Dover Amendment and the Cape Cod Commission saying that they were not taking up the DRI, I think that's why we find that town and this town in the same position.
Right. So that's just complete sidestep. So we can go back to putting this on the agenda with a, a letter to ask Dennis to include us in any discussions if they're able to get an audience with.
Or perhaps, again, a, a meeting with Dennis to.
Yeah, but if they're not going to get a seat at the table, they're looking for the same.
Right, but my point is almost a strategy session with them, and potentially KP Law, on how we navigate it.
Yeah, I think.
Deny the seat.
Right, I think the first thing is to KP Law to say, where are you at with Dennis, because they are our council, and then say, okay, well, what, what's the next move we could make, right? And that could be that we draft a letter to work collectively with Dennis, because it's mostly, you know, it's right on our border, and, and see where we go with that, with council, rather than just put it on an agenda to just talk about it in the sense that if, it'd be better to have a week or two to draft a letter, bring a letter in and say, let's do this with council having reviewed it.
Oh, no, 100%.
Yeah, so, all right, so I've.
Can I ask one question? Amongst the conversations, can we make absolutely cert, I, I know KP Law's representing both towns, and that doesn't necessarily mean something if there's a divergence of the individual objectives of the parties, but I see where we're at and where they're at as being convergent of the same, the same concerns. So, but I would like to ask KP Law whether they see any conflict interest in talking about it with both of us.
Okay. Anything else from Board members? That was your report, right? That was under your report. I don't have anything, so.
Welcome to the chair. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.